Okay. I think it's about time to get started. If the Boy Scouts are almost ready?
Hey, we're always ready, always prepared.
Okay. Well, listen, welcome so much. What a great turnout. This is a typical Ferry Farm turnout. I knew this was gonna happen. Thank you so much for all coming out. I kinda texted my wife. I think she's in the back somewhere hiding. So, oh, she's not hiding. So, I texted my wife and I was gonna say, "What a great turnout we had." And I was waiting for the text back. They're here because they all hate you. That's why they're here. They're gonna throw tomatoes at you. So, no. Thanks so much for coming to the George Washington District. You know, I don't do these a lot, but I think we need to do these once a year down here, maybe change different schools because, as you see, it is a logistical nightmare. I have folks working late. Teachers are here. Principals are here. We're opening up the school. And I'm kinda, I'm a little, I'm sensitive to that. But we do need to do this at least once a year. But most importantly, is I'm here to give you information, but I really want to hear from you. And I've got some people to introduce after a flag call. We want to hear from you and your concerns and your issues. As we stated earlier, as I stated earlier, there's two ways to do that. You could raise your hand and a Boy Scout will come to you with a microphone if something, if you have a question. Or you can write a comment card and say, "I'd like to know more about what are you doing for Stafford School Safety," for instance, with what's going on. And then one of us will answer. I have everyone up here on the hot seat. And I'll introduce everyone after flag call. And, boys, whenever you're ready.
Scouts, 112.
Whatever one please rise.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready, two. Hold for the color. Scouts, left, face. Forward, march. Don't worry, boys. We've had this on camera for about 80 years. Good. So, thank you very much. So, I'm gonna do some introductions and then I'm gonna do some thank yous. First, I'd like to introduce Tom Cohn. He's our George Washington District Supervisor. Mr. Cohn. We have our, some school board members here. The Chairman of the Board, Ms. Trish Shealy from the Rock Hill District. Ms. Pam Young from Garrisonville. And Dr. Sarah Chase from Falmouth. Do I have any other elected officials in the audience that I have not recognized? Okay. Of course, some people have asked me, "I got two questions where, who is Dr. Benson?" Well, Dr. Benson is over here to the right of the flag. Dr. Benson. Superintendent of Schools. And then we have Chris Fulmer, our Finance Chief. And we have Scott Haran, our Lead Engineer. So, I have some thank yous and I'm gonna do them now because the boys may get, go home. But first, I want to thank Troop 218 from White Oak Fire Department. Good job, boys. I'd like to thank the Ferry Farm Elementary School for putting this together and working so hard for us and the teachers staying late and coming here. I'd like to thank the Ferry Farm Elementary PTA for setting up some refreshments. Boys, don't touch the cookies, but there's cookies and water back there if you want. Mr. Bill Leap and the Brookpoint AV Team. It's really a combination of a lot of kids from different schools with the cameras here. Thank you very much, boys. The Stafford County Sheriff's Department. I have First Sergeant Palmeroy in the back. And thanks for showing up. We really appreciate it. Where's Madison Lee? Where is Madison Lee? She left her in the room. Well, Madison Lee is about this big and extremely cute. And she's teacher, Ms. Lee's daughter. Well, she just went to town making all those pencils that she grabbed, just sharpening them up. And I grabbed the box of them and she said, "I need more. You need more." "No, no, Madison, we don't need anymore." But thank you so much, Madison, for doing those pencils, boys. But more importantly, let's thank you all from the George Washington District for coming out here tonight. I think it's gonna be a good night, whether it's you're in the receive mode for information or you're gonna, you want us to transmit to you. You want us to talk. So, and I think that's, that's gonna be a good night. Agenda. Can you, everyone see the agenda? If not, you know, we're gonna have a couple of comments from Mr. Cohn. Then Principal Freeman's gonna come up. We'll talk quickly about the rebuild or renovation of this school from Mr. Haran, our Lead Engineer. And then what we'll do is a discussion and a vote. So, what we want to do for the discussion and the vote is, we'll talk about it. We'll pull the comment cards that have to do with the renovation or rebuild. And then it'll be, I'll say renovation, it'll be thumbs up. And/or rebuild, or I'll say rebuild, thumbs up. And we'll get a count and then we'll move on. We'll talk about school security. Same thing. We'll have a discussion. We'll talk about calendar options, pre and post Labor Day. And we'll talk about the budget that were put forth this year to the Board of Supervisors. And then it'll be an open forum just to talk whatever you want to talk about or ask a question. And if I can't answer it, I've got the professionals here that will answer it. So, without further ado, gentlemen, do you want to come on up on stage in the hot seat? And, Mr. Cohn, floor is yours, sir.
All right. Thank you. Did everybody hear me without them? Okay, being a teacher, you know, I'm just used to being short and loud. Thank you, Dwayne, for inviting me. It's great to be here at Ferry Farm again, to my area. Been here often, way back. Yeah, I know, really. I don't really think I'll ever get taller. I realize that. Way back, there was a CIP committee which I chaired and we went on tours. So, when this first was being discussed, memories. When this first was being discussed, we came here, toured the school, talked to Mr. Freeman, talked to the PTO. We've talked to teachers and parents. And then since then, I've been in touch with loads of people about the situation here at the Ferry Farm and we're really concerned. And we want to see what we can do to help this area. So, I'm really looking forward to hearing what you have to say and your thoughts on It's really your, a lot of this is your decision-making. It shouldn't just be top-down dictated by other people. Since becoming a supervisor, it's been very enjoyable. Besides dealing with fires out in the middle of Hollywood farms and flooding and losing roofs and etc., well, getting into budget season, that's always enjoyable and challenging. Of course, we're dealing with the cluster subdivision issue that went before the Planning Commission last week. It's coming before us on March 20th. If you have any questions about that, feel free to contact me and grab me. Many people received a wonderful mailer that went out even to people in Ferry Farm who have quarter acre or one-third acre lots, which was rather interesting. And what was even more interesting was that they didn't say who mailed it. And the only phone number on here to contact was mine, so, which was nice because when I talked to people, I could let them know about the disinformation that they were receiving. So, if you have any questions on that, feel free to come and grab me. Lastly, in our area, we have had over 50 instances of popping. Popping is when people go to your driveway, pop open your car to try to find something inside your car, and they take it. They, sometimes they're looking for money and chargers and etc., but they may not be. Sometimes they're looking for guns. More importantly lately, according to the Sheriff's Department, they're looking for any information that they can use for identity theft. And so, I have some flyers that Sheriff Decatur gave me. He suggests very strongly that you lock your cars, even in your driveways now, even on, if you're on a main road, they're going there. As well as making sure you don't have your remote controls in your vehicles overnight because they're stealing that to try to get in your car later. And he has increased patrols in our area. Both sides of Ferry Road, all the way up to Ringgold, have been hit very significantly, as well as some areas in Falmouth. So, just be aware of that and you might want to, have any incident of your car being left open, which is another nice, wonderful thing, is you come out to your car and the battery's dead. Let the police know so they can keep track of it and know when it happens. So, I will stop so that we can get to hear from you and thank you very much. And you want anything, you know where to find me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohn. So, big school division. You know, I always put a slide, I kinda, to kinda cannibalize the information. So, we'll start off big. Thirty-two schools, five high schools, eight middle schools, 17 elementary schools. We also have an alternative education school and a Head Start school. About 28,000, 27,000 students. Thirty percent of them are free and reduced, which we offer them free and reduced lunches, etc. Ten percent spent are special education and ELL, our English Language Learners. We have about 7%. I've got bar graphs that all these groups are rising. They're really, really rising up over the last couple of years. We're all trying to figure it out. Huge employer in the county, 3,652 employees. One of the largest fully accredited divisions in Virginia. 94.3 on-time graduation rate. This has been going up steadily and we're very proud of that. Virginia averages about 91. Scholastic SAT scores. That was something that, you know, I think all the board members were, you know, we have the SOLs, but, you know, and we're doing well in the SOLs compared to state. And I have a chart for that, a backup chart. But the SATs are one of those things that, you know, we really want to make sure that our kids are doing well at. Number one is grade point average, you know, when we're getting into college. But the number two is SAT, you know, and the toughness of your courses that you take through high school. Those are three, those are kind of those three pillars. Very important. And then top challenges. Here we have, you know, lack of state and federal funding. And we'll talk later, I'll talk later about the budget. I'll talk about the budget in general, where our money comes from. And I think you'll be very surprised. Teacher turnover, competitive market, you know, paying our teachers, paying our employees, keeping up with Northern Virginia, it's tough. It's tough. And the teachers in the audience know that it's tough, right? Population growth. Lot of homes popping up. Mr. Cohn could talk to you at length about buy right, which is the farmer sells his land and bills 10 houses. We can't do anything about that. No rules, no regulations, but the rezoning process that has to go through the county, you can do something about that. You have to, you have to acknowledge and approve that rezoning. So, those are some of the things that we're concerned about. So, that's just a quick snapshot. I'm gonna turn it over to Principal Bob Freeman to talk a little bit about Ferry Farm.
So, Mr. McCosker asked me to do a brief little history of the Ferry Farm. And in 1956, the building was being built. And in '57, students moved into the building and there were seven teachers in the building. And the original part of the building is the front hallway of our school. Then we had some additions. In 1963, they added what we call the middle hallway or the pink hallway. And 10 additional students were, classes were added to the school. Then in 1989, there was a big renovation. So, where we're sitting right now, they provided a new cafeteria, the hallway going up the hall, four kindergarten classrooms, three additional classrooms, and a music room. So, that is outside this hallway. And then in 1992, another large addition was added. And that's our back hallway. And back there, there were 10 more classrooms added. And that's where our fourth and fifth graders currently are housed. So, that gave us a total square footage of 70,550 feet. Then in CIP, I wasn't here in 2007. I didn't get appointed to Ferry Farm until 2010. So, they were having discussions in 2007 about a renovation project here at Ferry Farm. 2010, I was lucky enough to move in and they were still talking about a renovation here at Ferry Farm. And then luckily, in 2012, the cock of a renovation started switching to a rebuild at Ferry Farm. And we've been sitting in a rebuild since 2012. And there's, continue to have discussions on that. And they will provide you more information on that this evening. I'm gonna turn this over to Mr. Haran to talk about the facility assessments.
I'm gonna stay up here. No, no. Good evening. I'm Scott Haran. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Operations and it's great to be here with you tonight. So, as Principal Freeman had mentioned, back in 2006, 2007, the division decided to embark on a renovation program for some of our older elementary and middle schools. Of that, there were seven schools originally identified and Ferry Farm was one of the seven. Grafton Village, Falmouth, Staffordale, Moncur, Drew Middle School, Hartwood, and Ferry Farm were the, were the schools identified. And it really came, the driver of the particular renovation program really came from Grafton Village. We had some interior air quality issues at Grafton Village and it stimulated us working on a HVAC project. And as we started looking into the HVAC thing, we said, "When's the last time we really put some effort into some of these older schools?" And so, that really was the impetus or the beginning of the renovation program. And so, we unveiled that to the school board and they embraced it over time and it entered into our capital improvement program, all seven schools. Now, there were small renovations at a certain level. We had many discussions with the school board and with the communities as to what level of renovations we should have in these schools. And so, that changed over time and through the different capital improvement plans that we do annually, that renovation, the scope of that renovation changed. And so, we finally settled on a certain, what we call a Level 3 renovation, which included close to gutting the facilities out. And so, our first one that we embarked on was Falmouth Elementary School. And then the second, we went to Staffordale and then Grafton Village. And during that whole process, we used some of the tools that were identified here to help us get to that decision-making point and to help us inform the school board so that they could make some great decisions. So, the facility assessment was done in 2007. And that kind of, what that is, is a survey of the school. And it looked at all the different building systems, the HVAC system, the roof, the parking lot, the electrical systems, the plumbing systems, to see the condition of those facilities or those building systems and to see what the expected life is still left in them. And so, we gathered that information. That particular facility assessment was updated recently for support in this latest round of the capital improvement plan. In the middle of that was a study done by Hayes Large Architects. They were the first architects that did the renovation of Falmouth and Staffordale. So, we asked them to also do the study here along with Moncur and Grafton Village. And the study was intended to say, "Should we renovate? Should we invest the money in renovating or should we rebuild?" The result, to cut to the chase, the result of that study essentially said, "The cost of renovating," there's a industry standards that we typically use that if you're going to invest into your house and it costs 70% of the cost of buying a new house, then you should consider, this discussion should start, what should we build new? And so, this particular study was the first time that said, "Hey, based on the cost and the condition of your building systems, we recommend that it's gonna cost somewhere in the 80%-ish range of renovating versus a new construction at that time." So, they recommended that we should at least have the dialogue and the discussion of considering a rebuild or a new school. So, that's when it first started, came, coming into the timeline. Fast forward a little bit and you see in 2012, there were a lot of dialogue each year, but in 2012 was the first year that the rebuild of Ferry Farm came into serious discussion during the CIP. And it was, at that stage, the Board of Supervisors identified several schools to be rebuilt and several schools to stay renovation. Ferry Farm was identified to be a rebuild and it's been in the facility assess, I mean, in the capital improvement plan ever since to be rebuilt. Now, it has moved based on affordability and based on needs across the county. The timeframe when the school was to be rebuilt has shifted. Can we change the slide? Next slide. Keep going. And keep going. Okay. So, the renovate of Ferry Farm, when we first identified, this was the concept planned as it matured and the scope of the project got larger. It's going to be a very similar renovation to Moncur, Grafton Village, and Stafford. Certain level, we were gonna go in, we were gonna add some square footage. In those schools, we added a new library and we repurposed the old library space for additional resource rooms, additional front office suites, space, and some additional support functions. So, we were following the same methodology and the same template. There was going to be no additional capacity added to the school. It was going to remain its current capacity. It was going to be a multi-phased construction. Now, we looked at this site and said, "Can we renovate and put up a modular for swing space?" We were very, very lucky when we renovated Staffordale, Falmouth, and Grafton. We had some excess capacity at Stafford Middle School that we were able to use and house those elementary school students in three successive years. Very lucky. The stars shined up and we, we were very successful in executing that project. What that meant is the renovations were unoccupied renovations. So, we had no students, no staff during that work. And it was done faster, it was done cheaper, and we didn't have any conflict with students and them trying to learn during the day and those things. So, it's always better to do it with an empty school versus an occupied. But this particular, we programmed this project to be an occupied renovation, which means you have to make space in the school available for that renovation. It takes longer to do, there's more potential conflict points, and you have to establish a swing space. And in many cases, swing space is established using modular buildings. And so, you would take a wing down, move those students into the modular for four or five months while you renovate that stage. Then during the summer times, during that period, the summer times is where you would attack core spaces that can't be vacated during the school year, such as the cafeteria or your heating system or those type of things. So, that, that's the model. That was the template that we planned for the renovation. We estimated about a 10-classroom trailer modular complex, all part of the project. It would occur over two school years and three summers. So, you'd have the summers on each end and the summer in the middle. That was the plan for a renovate. Next slide, please. So, on the rebuild, it was essentially, we looked at the site here and the campus, the Ferry Farm campus, was essentially large enough that we could build a new elementary school on the campus while we continued to operate this school. Very similar to the model that we used for Stafford High School, just in a smaller version. And so, we tried the different footprints of our old prototype as well as the new prototype to make sure it would fit and we certainly can do it. Now, there'll certainly be challenges as with any school that you're trying to build on a operating campus. And so, but this was the model for a rebuild. It would be a 966-student school, very, very similar to the prototype that we're building at Moncur currently. It has 950 kids for the K-5 environment and 16 for pre-K classrooms. The basis of design, as I mentioned, would be Moncur. We have new ed specs that increase, increase the square footage of the old prototype, the Anthony Burns or the Rocky Runs or the Conway, that prototype, based on our need to change some of the way, or some of the spaces that we give to teachers and the students in how they learn and how the teachers teach in 21st century learning skills. So, the idea would be, we would build this new school on the campus. We would, as it completed, that summer, we would move the staff and prepare them for the students in the fall. Then as those students came in, we would demo, demo the old building and create the fields and the parking lots that we would take up with the new construction. Again, very similar to Stafford High School in that, that process. So, next slide. This is just a rendering of the new Moncur prototype sitting on the Ferry Farm. Doesn't mean this is how we would do it. We just, as part of the process, we were looking to make sure it fit. We were using that footprint on, on the school. You can see where the existing school is if you, if you can see that outlined. That would stay in operation. Obviously, there'd be some challenges with parking and challenging with students arriving every day because some of those spaces that you're currently using would be occupied during the construction process. Next slide. I think, so, Mr. McCosker, where are you? Come rescue me. So, I don't know if you want to open it up for questions, Q and A here, or if you wanted to take over.
Yes, no, I do. I have some comment cards and the Boy Scouts are in the back with the microphone. If you just raise your hand, they'll come to you with, with the microphone. Thank you, Mr. Haran, and keep your microphone, though, I think. Oh, I forgot. So, we do have some questions and comments. Ferry Farm was moved to a rebuild after Moncur's rebuild and it was voted yes. Why are we still having dialogue? That was short and to the point, wasn't it? Bottom line up front. I like that bluff. Right. So, number one, we're having dialogue because of what I mentioned earlier in the evening was, I want to hear, I want to hear from you all. I tell you right now, what I'm getting from across the street is renovation, renovation, renovation with the Board of Supervisors. The school board has already voted rebuild, rebuild, rebuild. I think both boards are still kind of up in the air and they want to hear what the community has to say. We want, we want to make sure that we're taking care of some of the growth in the Centralia County with the elementary schools. We have some other issues with special education classrooms and pre-K classrooms, for the most part, pre-K classrooms, taking up a lot of space in, on our buildings in the north and in the south. And so, we're trying to, we're trying to do some, some innovative things to, to help that overcrowding out. Because there's always the idea of, you know, so, why, why renovate if we're, we need the space, if it's not gonna give us any space? So, there's, there are folks that, you know, are saying that. And you know, and my answer to that has always been, and this is, you know, and I've said this on the board several times, is, you know, there's 17 elementary schools in the county and there's two elementary schools that haven't had a recent renovation or that are brand-new. And that's Hartwood Elementary School at Ferry Farm. You know, 1957, this was built. We've had several renovations, as Mr. Haran has said. However, you know, so, I guess the simple thing that I think of is like, okay, so you keep building houses in every mill. The people that don't even live there, that generates a brand-new school for their kids. So, where's, 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 where's our kids' parity? You know, when do we get a new school with good lighting and all the, and all the, where's the equity in it? So, there's always that, right? That's, that's, that's a big thing for me is, you still have to keep a commitment to renovate a school, whether it's this year, next year, or five years down the road. But I'll tell you, when we came into the CIP process, this renovation, rebuild was getting pushed out to '26 for a decision. You know, so, so that was the generation of, hey, renovate, rebuild, have the discussion, try to move this up on the, on the calendar because it costs money and we have to, we have a window of this much money over our 10-year CIP. And, you know, the courthouse was ranked number one, a brand-new courthouse, for 71 million. The supervisors came back and said, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, timeout. 71 million may be a little bit too much money." And so, they're rethinking that. Mr. Cohn is on the board now and they're rethinking that kind of stuff now. High school number six was, was a big, was a big, hey, we need high school number six. Our high schools are getting, and I have a stoplight chart and backups, you know, shows you the school red, green, and yellow for their populations. And you'll see that, you know, we're getting close on high schools, too. So, so there's a lot of competing requirements, but it's really, the discussion is still moving forward. You know, success, I think, for us is to get something done to Ferry Farm. Something done. Let me, here's another question up here. And about the rebuild. Who did the recent facility assessment? Who did the recent facility assessment? Who did the recent facility assessment?
The update to the facility assessment was done by a company called EMG. They're a consultant of ours that we hired back in 2007 to do the first round of 20 schools. And so, we went back to them in preparation for this latest round of CIP to make sure we had really good, accurate data on Hartwood, Ferry Farm, and Drew. And so, all three of those schools had their facility assessment updated by EMG, and they're out of Hunt, Maryland. Any additional questions on that?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Haran. Question number two. Is there any comments? Yes, sir.
You mentioned earlier the 70% of rebuild threshold for discussion. In the updated facility assessment, do you have a new number? Do you have some indication of where this facility stands relative to that threshold?
Yes, sir, I do. And I'll give you the general answer because I don't have the specifics, but I think the general answer will do. So, we looked at the next 10 years during, we looked at all the buildings, critical building systems, and we tried to place when we think they're aging out or when they need to be replaced. And so, we did it on a 10-year window that correspond with the CIP. And so, what we did, we identified in what years certain building systems needed to be replaced or updated and the cost, and the cost in that particular year. So, if in 2020, we had to, we were saying the entire HVAC system or part of the wing had to be replaced and how much it would be, let's just say, $1.5 million. And then we had some parking lot work that had to be done, and that was a half a million dollars. And so, we had all this, all these different critical building systems identified in different years, and we saw that most of it was peaking in a certain year, in two or three years, in the middle of that 10-year, where we had a lot of stuff needing to be done in '21, '22, and '23. So, we identified as part of the capital improvement submittal on a renovation. Okay? Again, as Mr. McCosker said, we submitted it as a rebuild, but when we were asked to start looking at as a renovation, we had that data. And so, when we identified the year, the optimal year that we felt a renovation should occur, we identified a specific year. I believe it was '23, but don't hold me up to it, but I'm going through the process. And so, we deferred all of that maintenance or all of that replacement up to '23 to get a cost. And then we took two or three years in front of that with systems that were identified to be replaced in those years, and we dragged them back to '23. So, we consolidate them into a renovation project with a cost in that particular year of how much we thought it would cost. And so, we used that cost as the renovation cost. Then we said, okay, what would it take for us to build a school in that particular year and the cost associated with building a school? So, we came up with that, and then we compared it. And the renovation cost exceeded 100% for Ferry Farm. The cost that we would invest into this particular school in that particular year was in, close to 100%. It may have been 96% or what have you, but it far exceeded the 70%. So, as a decision-making tool for staff, and we shared that, you know, with our leaders, is, that was our recommendation that. Now, there are a lot of variables that go into a decision like that. The community is a big one, and whether your building is a historic building or whether it has certain community or historical ties that the community. So, not all buildings, not all old buildings should be demolished. There are many, many old buildings that with the correct renovation and the correct funding into those buildings can last a long, a long time. So, but that is a industry model for looking at when buildings get to the 70 to 75%, that discussion should start to whether you should want to replace it or renovate it. Does that answer your question, sir? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Haran. Okay, this one's a good one. Okay, so it's, what, okay. Principals Freeman, you turn around and face that wall. Turn around, don't look at the audience. Don't look at the audience, don't peek. Now, what do teachers in the building feel about a real reno or a rebuild? So, teachers, if you want a rebuild, raise your hand. Okay? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13. Okay, hands down. Teachers in the building, if you want a renovation, raise your hand. I don't see any. Okay? So, I think that answers that question. All right. If there is a rebuild, what size of school are we looking at? So, we talked a little bit about that. Rebuild would be about 966. You know, then you add into your program capacity into that. Go ahead, ma'am. You want a microphone, please?
That's all right, I'm loud enough.
Okay.
So, our current capacity is 600-something?
Our current, our current number of kids in the school are 630. Our capacity is right now with the basement.
754.
754 with basement.
Seven, mid-700s.
Mid-700s with the basement.
Mid-700s is the actual design capacity.
That's with the basement, I think, added, right?
That's correct, sir.
We added classes in the basement. So, let's just fairly say 700 to 750 is...
So, if the new school is going to house 900, where would those other 200 kids come from?
So, that's a good question. The question is, where would those 200 kids come from? If you do the microphone, then we can hear a little bit better.
If we're planning on using the basement, which has not been used as far as I know, I've been here 18 years working, my children started here in 1994, we haven't used the basement for classrooms probably eight-plus years because of air quality issues. Why all of a sudden is the basement okay to use as classrooms?
Natural lighting. I don't think so.
Okay, so, I will tell you that, there's, yeah, another one up there. I'll tell you that the, we did a countywide recounting of basements, classrooms. I mean, you know, he knows I didn't love, I didn't love what he came out with for the school because I know the basement. However, we did a countywide and it was a fair assessment, however, we do have issues, I believe, with the basement, right? So, that's something that we're in discussion with, with the county staff, and I know they're going to, once we figure out what we're going to do with the school is when we'll either, if it's a renovation, then we'll actually, everything will come out, it'll be mitigation, it'll be expensive, but...
That's correct, sir. To answer your question, ma'am, we would not use that space for classrooms unless we invested into that space. Okay? So, there is no, there's no intent, there's no desire at this point in time to occupy that, but we wanted to capture the potential space, right? So, when we were looking at it, that was our goal, to capture the potential space so that if we did have to expand and use it, then, and we had a small study done on that, specifically on the basement, to see, because we do, you're correct. It does not have the proper ventilation in there to hold classrooms in there. And so, and we've known that for some time, as you alluded to the fact, but it would cost a certain amount of money to invest in that space. And so, we would not pursue that to do that. Does that answer your question? Okay, very good. And ma'am, I think you...
And back to your question. So, where, now, we do have a new demographic planner, which really, really has helped us a lot at the school division. We weren't relying on just the county and the kind of our folks that aren't professionals and that. Right now, I'm not sure, but off the cuff, it would be one consideration, depending on how Leland Station starts to grow and how Conway Elementary School starts to balloon. It could be we take Charlestown Commons next to Giant, those children in there, and that's probably, I don't know the number of kids there, but that's a possibility. A possibility is to continue pulling out from Rocky Run, which would be a one, it'd be a heck of a ride, but there's a possibility of the Old Forge area along I-95 and the Warrington Road, pulling those kids down, down here as well. There's always also the opportunity for folks to build on other lands, as you've heard off and on about, there's a farm off of Three right across from Duff-McDuff that's kind of always in limbo. And golly, if they build there, it was about 3,000 units. How many, how many was that, Tom? 4,000 units? 4,000 units across Duff-McDuff. That would be, in my opinion, ugly, very ugly. Does that answer your question, ma'am?
Yeah.
Okay. Good morning, ma'am. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. So, my question is actually just building on the point that you made.
I'm sorry?
Are we ready to go?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. So, my question is, building on the point that you made about the possibility of development in the district, because we do have so much open space. So, how, would there be any specific capacity sort of kept in reserve to allow for future development? Because, you know, pulling all these kids from different areas where there's overcrowding is all well and good, but what good does that do our school if we have all of this capacity but it's immediately taken up? So, is there going to be some planning for future growth?
What did you want to talk about, Chairman Healy? And then I'll answer.
I just wanted to say that redistricting is one of the hardest things that we do as a school board, and it is, I know Mr. McCosker knows his district and he can probably tell you areas, but, you know, there's just no way that anything like that could identify into the, so, it's going to be dependent on, you know, the time, when the spaces are available, and, you know, different opportunities in the county. We have been, you know, oh.
I guess I'm not loud enough either. Well, that's debatable. But anyway, when we do a redistricting, we have tried various ways to do it in the past, and we've never found the one that really, you know, is the perfect solution. But one thing that we did with the high school that seemed to, you know, be very beneficial was to have the community involved in that redistricting. We had a great big meeting at Colonial Forge and we had tables set up and we involved the community in that. And I think that's something that the board is, has expressed an interest in pursuing when we do another one. So, don't, you know, have any conception of where the kids are going to come from.
Sorry.
The seats, the seats will be filled, but that is like a TBD, to be determined, and it's going to be, you know, prior to an opening of a school, but not a whole lot before that. And I'll give you an example. We did a redistricting several years ago, planning for when Moncur opens, which has got delayed and it's going to open a year from September. And we're already looking at a new redistricting because the redistricting that we did in anticipation of that school opening and having additional seats, if we opened it now, would be, at least based on the projections, overcrowded. So, you can't plan too far ahead on those things. So, I just, I just didn't want anybody to get, you know, all excited about, you know, having, you know, people coming because they will come, but we, there's just no idea, no way you can predict at this point. But hopefully, the community will be involved in that and, you know, all the communities that are affected.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Healy. Back to your question. The, in the CIP is hopefully, right now, hopefully, a renovation, at least in our CIP, is hopefully a renovation or a rebuild, but there's also High School Number Six and possibly Elementary School 18. And that, there's a, there's a centered district, there's a centered district in our county that's ballooning up pretty much. Here's the Elementary School chicklet chart. I call it a stoplight chart, a chicklet chart, and I think this is my pointer. So, you see this Hampton Oaks, Hartwood, Kate Waller Barrett, Margaret Brent, kind of ballooning up throughout the years here. You'll find in the north at Rock Hill and Ferry Farm and Garrisonville that they're looking actually pretty good for numbers and the out-years. So, this is kind of the, we would hope to address a little bit of this from some of these schools and maybe some of these, some of these more eastern districts of Hartwood, but no telling, as Ms. Healy said. Does that answer your question? So, we would hope to put Elementary School 18, I would think Elementary School 18 and, I'm sorry, Elementary School 18 and High School Six, I would think that it would go off 17 in the Hartwood District somewhere. They would pull folks down from Colonial Forge and they'd kind of like the, you know, side-by-side setup. That's how I see. Can you, Ryan, can you give Ms. Randall, oh, Sean, thank you. Give Ms. Randall up. Thank you.
Hi. In talking about the renovation versus rebuild, in some of the things that, I worked closely with Scott on the five elementary schools that we did at the time in the CIP, but when we look at the renovations that we have, they seem to be very brick and mortar. And in seeing some of the repairs that I've, I saw on the spreadsheet, which is very hard to read, going out throughout the years, they're not taken care of, I mean, you just saw from your teacher's perspective that they're interested in a rebuild because their interest is in enriching the education. And they're, just like with Stafford High School, there became educational restrictions that that building had. And that is the same thing that's happening here, is there's educational restrictions that are occurring within the building. And when you talked about doing the renovations of even like Grafton and Falmouth and Staffordale, you enhanced and enlarged, and in here, on our footprint that we currently have, enhancing and enlarging to give us a library or a media center that is equivalent, and as Mr. McCosker spoke, parity with other schools, is not going to be possible. So, when we're looking at renovation versus rebuild, we, there's the brick and mortar side, but more importantly, there is the educational side. And I think that's something that needs to be thought through.
Hi, I just wanted to know, when would a rebuild begin? And also, has this school, does this school have any security measures in place?
So, no, great questions. We're going to talk about security next. I'm trying to compartmentalize our questions, so we'll talk about rebuild, and once we get off the rebuild and renovation, we'll move into security. So, what was the first part of the question, Mrs.?
When?
There's, so, what, right now, what we're wedged is a 10-year CIP is what we put forth at the Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors will take that 10-year CIP. I hope to, you know, move quickly. That's just me. And I'll, you know, I've been fighting hard, ask them, they're, they know I'm, I go berserk up there and I get kicked by Chairman Healy. Calm down, Dwayne, calm down. About, I'm really passionate about doing something, you know? Goes back to, you know, what about parity? What about commitment? Right? So, a microphone, please?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I was wondering if you could pull up the plot that you had for the proposed...
Sure. I'm in trouble because I'm a Microsoft guy.
You're going fast forward.
The plot of the rebuild.
Artistic rendering.
There we go.
That's it.
I'm looking at it right now, and I assume, based on what I can see here, that the rebuild is being planned for the back area here where the woods are currently.
Well, that is one option. We looked at, we looked at a whole lot of options, and this is just one that we decided to show. Again, very conceptual, 2D, you know, on paper only, not, we didn't do surveys, we didn't do 3D. 3D, you start doing 3D, you start to lose a lot, a lot of space, you know, because you start, although it's very flat right around here, so there's not a lot of elevation change. But, yes, sir, that was just an...
All right. I live in the Hillcrest Heights area, and Ferry Farm really, you know, it's a presence, but it nowhere affects the Hillcrest Heights area, especially Bell Road there. Was there given any thought about placement of the school on a current ball field area?
Yes.
Because that wouldn't affect any of the current neighborhoods, and then maybe the ball fields could be put where you're proposing to put it.
Absolutely, sir. And I will tell you that if, in fact, we pursue the future of a rebuild here, the community involvement in discussions of how the school's going to, you know, where it's going to be and how it's going to be situated on the site, it will be immense. There'll be many community meetings, we'll get that input, but... There will be many community meetings, we'll get that input, but yes, this is just one option, and we did. Originally, we looked at the ball fields as being the primary place.
We had it about halfway, you know, the two options were about halfway on the ball field.
Right.
And then, you know, the existing school is here, so we would rebuild, and then, like you mentioned here, sitting up against the wood line would be the school, and then everything in front of the school would be that, another option, that, two viable options. And there'll be a lot of discussion about that, but that's good input. Sean? Once again, you know, one of the nice things about a rebuild is the kids stay in school, and then they walk across the street to the new school. So, that is somewhat nice.
I liked your chart dealing with the 10-year. The thing I see is that we say there isn't going to be, there isn't a lot of building right now, and that's because builders will say, well, look at this school, why would I have a subdivision if the school is, doesn't have everything necessary to, you know, for the students? And so, if we do rebuild, we probably won't be in the green anymore, because we will have more students in, and it will be used up. It won't be like we have a lot of empty space, because once builders see that it's a nice school, a brand-new school, they will tout that all over the place to say, look at this new subdivision I'm building, because we have great schools here. But our school has not had anything done in so long, I don't see any builder saying, well, why don't I build off on this land here, like they do around Conway and all the other newer schools.
Right.
So, that 10-year thing may not be like that at all, once we get something like that.
The 10-year green portion for this school and Garrisonville are all dependent on, you know, if a 4,000 unit pops up, that game over there. Microphone?
So, I'm waiting, I'm sorry. So, you said that we would, we're back on, if we do a rebuild, we're back on for tenure with the CIP. We've already been on the CIP for 10 years. I know there are other schools that are quite a bit younger than our school, that have already had library rebuilds and this, that, and the other thing. Why, legit, I get it's money, 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 but how come we keep getting put down on the bottom of the barrel? Our kids are just as important as all the other kids in the county.
The EDS and Specks in 2016 said that as well. 2016 to 2017, you roll it over, right? So, they just updated, they posted the 80 minutes, it shows it. Ferry Farm is still on there to be the second exemplary example of being a new EDS school. Sorry, I'm getting it mixed up now, but, so, prove it, show it. What's up?
Yeah, no, thank you. I appreciate it, and this is exactly the feedback that, you know, we're all listening to, and that this is awesome. You know, everyone knows, everyone, you know, I'm not a very calm, I'm not a calming sort of person on the school board, or the Board of Supervisors, and everyone knows it. You know, so, this is, there's my commerce right there, Dwayne, calm down, Dwayne, calm down, and I'm actually yelling the same stuff, right? Go ahead. Whoever has the microphone next?
I have the mic. I'm Leslie Buchanan, I'm the PTA president here, and I kind of have a follow-up to what Kim Grant just said. The county has the values for learning, community, excellence, respect, and integrity. Where do these show when we're constantly being pushed to the side and plans and promises being broken? Like Kim said, we've been on this list for 10 years, and there's been a multitude of reasons why we're continued to be cast aside. Can anybody explain those to me?
So, thank you, Ms. Buchanan. So, agree, you know, clap, right? Feel free. The reason I stay in this job is because I've got a pretty thick jacket, and I've eaten too much, so I've got a little protection. But, yeah, I mean, that's exactly right, is when are we going to get ours? We've got 10 years, we're in the 10-year CIP. I fight hard with my school board members right now. I had four, five school board members keep Ferry Farm in the CIP as a rebuild. Hearing across the street, they don't want to spend money on a rebuild, and they want to, it's too much money, and the supervisors. So, this is the, we can never commit a future board, you know, so it is, it's, do you have four members with you on either side? And so, that is something that, and I'll tell you, it's easy, it's a lot easier to send the email to me or to Dr. Benson. However, when it comes this time of year, we really need to go in front of the supervisors and say, hi, I'm, you know, I'm from the Rock Hill district, and I think this. Hey, I'm from the George Washington district, and I think this. Because right now, Dwayne running the mouth to the supervisors, they're just kind of going, okay, next, that's what you're supposed to do. Hold on, did a voter, is that, are you a voter in my district? Yes, ma'am, what can I help you with, right? All right, you get it, right? Microphone?
I don't need one.
Okay, okay.
I work here.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
If we're looking at a rebuild, what in between now, if I'm thinking we're talking nine, 10 years, what are we doing for the learning environment between that time for these children and our staff? What's going to happen to that time? What's going to happen?
So, that's, no, excellent, excellent, right. So, I will tell you, I spoke at length, probably seven months ago, with Dr. Benson and the lead engineer, Mr. Haran, about, you know, because we were kind of getting limped along with, hey, you're going to get a rebuild, renovation, and we kept pushing off projects. And there was no projects for us on the 18, not many, anyway, on the 18, or not many on the 19 CIP list, which is the fix the air, new lights, new this. So, you know, they heard, they heard, they heard us, and you're exactly right, is we still need to, we've got to stop the pushing off of projects to fix. Thank you very much, even though you're a year old. It's a baby, I want to go, thank you. Come see me in 17 years with a voting card, anyway. So, we have to keep, we have to be very cognizant of that, is, you're right. Spot on.
Well, what are we going to do if we choose rebuild? What are we doing? If we say rebuild, what is going to happen to the environment that we are in now to make it more positive and a better learning environment for our students?
Let Dr. Benson take that.
Well, actually, I'm going to, I'm going to take a little side trail here, okay? So, this is just me talking, okay? This is not something that the board has decided at this point. But there is a way for us to address growth in the community and rebuild our schools that need to be rebuilt, if we think about it a little bit differently. All right, one of our challenges is we have early childhood special education classes sprinkled throughout the division, which significantly reduces the number of students that we can serve in our schools, okay? If we can find a way to relocate those to another facility, that's going to create additional space in existing schools, okay? If Ferry Farm rebuild, rebuild, not a renovation, okay, a rebuild, adds additional capacity to the division such that we can address some of the overcrowding through some redistricting, makes it more attractive, okay? The other elementary school that needs attention is Hartwood, and Hartwood is going to need to be a rebuild, okay? I think we can add almost the equivalent number of seats of elementary school 18 by doing those three things, okay? We take care of our existing buildings, we increase our capacity, and we do it in a way that doesn't require us to build elementary school number 18. So, I think that's something that we need to be thinking about, and I'm trying to advocate for as we move forward and try, excuse me, and figure out where things will fall in the CIP. Excuse me, let me get a little bit of water here. Thank you. Okay, so, I think there's a path forward where we can take care of our schools that need to be rebuilt and address additional capacity within the division, okay? But we're going to have to think about things a little bit differently. That's not the way things are currently mapped in the CIP, right? But the CIP is an evolving plan, right? Things change in the division, needs change. I think this particular combination of things will address multiple issues in terms of getting us growth and getting modern facilities for our kids in the parts of the county that don't have access to those modern facilities right now. Okay? Well, this is a critical juncture right now for us, right? We're in the process of developing the FY19 budget and adopting a new CIP, and that's work that both the school board and the board supervisors will be doing.
Adopting what CIP?
Okay.
You had 2016, EDS was rolled into 2017.
Yeah, and so, there will be, there will be continued conversation about what is in that CIP.
It's a little document.
In the next couple, well, and that's the thing, it is a 10-year document, right? But there will be conversation in the coming weeks before there is a vote on what that's going to look like.
So, before I hear any more, I'm interested in knowing, what, what action items do you want to take from this forum to go back and then speak on your March 20 meeting with the County Board of Supervisors? And how is it going to help us? What, what do we need to do more for you? But what are the action items? What do you want to take from this to then go back to them? Because we, from what I've learned in the two articles I tied together this week from FLS was, we hear about the forum going on, and then, oh, by the way, there's another article that speaks of the March 20 meeting and the $9 million shortfall. So, where does that affect any talk of a rebuild, which I'm all for the rebuild, all for the rebuild? Hate to see it just getting passed on and on. Play T-ball in that field there.
So, excuse me, yeah. So, two different issues, okay? One is the operational budget.
Right.
And the shortfall in the operational budget. The other is in what we adopt in terms of the CIP, okay? And those two things are going to, they're going to firm up here in the next few weeks. This is the time, right, to let folks know what it is that you want to support moving forward. On March 20th, our school board will present the school board's funding request to the Board of Supervisors. For the operational needs, but we will also be having a conversation about what might be different in the CIP that evening.
Do you have conversations or do you have action items to put onto the county to then answer on that CIP?
So, what is currently in the CIP from my perspective, okay, is not going to work, okay? And the two boards are going to need to sit down and figure out what.
I'm going to do it on the CIP, because I have one, but I want to make sure I lost the eight.
It has, it's the one that has the. What's that? 28, okay. Okay, so it has a wedge in it right now, right?
Oh, yeah, no, I brought it.
Right, so there's a wedge. Yes, yeah. So, I want to restate that, okay, right, right? A rebuild of Ferry Farm, increase the capacity so that we have some space to redistrict some students and provide some relief in other parts of the county, okay? Find a way to house our elementary special education programs in another location, so we free up space across elementary schools in the county, all right? And then look at a rebuild of Hartwood at a much higher capacity, right? If you add up all of those seats, you will, you'll essentially have another elementary school right in there, okay? Pres, in the preschool, elementary, sorry, early childhood special education, okay?
I'll take one or two more questions, and then we're going to, we're going to move on to the next topic.
Okay, is this on? I'm Dana Brown. I go to a lot of school board meetings, committee meetings, a lot of supervisor meetings, and I hear, and I can tell you all, that Dwayne McCosker is the one who was fighting for you guys. And what you guys need to do is my advice would be to go to the supervisors' meeting, because the problem is, this is the elephant in the room that nobody wants to talk about, and Mr. Kousma is taking all the heat on this, the chicklet charts and the projections, there's a lot of distrust from the supervisors, because those charts have been wrong repeatedly, repeatedly, and that's what's causing the problem with you guys getting moved back in the CIP. Now, sorry, Scott, but that's the truth of it. So, you guys need to go to the supervisors, and you need to tell them that you need the new school. Mr. McCosker is fighting for you, but he needs you guys to go with him, and that's the problem. That's why you guys get and keep getting moved, because it looks like you guys are less and less important every time a new chart comes out, so.
Okay, last question on the, and then we're going to.
Dr. Benson, and this is personal to me, because my son goes here in a special education classroom. So, your comment as far as special education needs to move to a central location.
Early childhood special education.
Oh.
Early child.
Okay, all right.
And I apologize.
Okay.
Between getting choked up and getting my letters confused.
All right, that makes a difference, thank you.
I'm still, maybe if I can talk. Childhood special education are for our three and four-year-olds that are identified in the community as needing additional support. They may or may not be in a program in a school that where they would continue within that school, and so there's a potential that we could have them located in another facility with other classes that would be similar. And we're committed to the model that we currently have, which is having four students with special needs and four peers in that class, okay? And I apologize.
Wonderful, a good discussion, and, you know, it's, like, again, I can go ballistic on the board, and then I can say, please, help me out, which they have on the rebuild, but unless you all stand up as taxpayers and say, hey, this is what we need, the Board of Supervisors, they're happy for you not to show up. They're excited. When you don't show up, they get real excited. It's good. Now, Tom likes it.
That's not true, Dwayne.
That's not true. You're right, I'm teasing. All right, so, let's, let's take a vote. Off the record, yeah, just to get a feel, just to get a feel. Yes.
Do you have a projected number of what it would cost to renovate versus the cost of a rebuild?
We do, we have, we have some numbers, I'm just not exactly sure about the renovation of such an older school.
No, we do have cost. They vary based on the year that we opened the school. So, Moncur, to do the entire project of Moncur, an idea, $35 million-ish, plus or minus, 35 million, I'm sorry, 36-point-something with the land, as Ms. Healy just reminded me. So, and that was last year's bidding, opening, so as each year goes forward, it gets a little bit more expensive. Renovation cost, as I mentioned to this gentleman earlier, if we decide to do the things identified in a facility assessment in a renovation, the cost exceeds that, again, depending on what year. We were looking at FY23 when we were doing the analysis. So, it has a little bit, but the relationship should still be the same, right? No matter when we use it. So, a renovation to address all the building critical systems and to do that over a three-year period, you know, would be a little bit more than that.
Good question, okay, what, last question? Yeah.
Thank you, I'll make this quick. I know you and I have talked about this, but it's a point that I would be interested to make as far as rebuild versus renovation. Right now, we're at 600-ish, and we would go to 900-ish, correct? Assumably, all the classroom teachers, you're going to keep the classroom sizes the same, so we would hire new teachers to handle the more kids. My question is for specialists, for reading specialists, for the reading lab, for math specialists, ESL, all of the people that help with the kids, our job would go from, it's 50% more kids, from 600 to 900. So, I'm interested in the space of the new facility for that, and I'm interested if you would talk to the plan as far as, I know most of the larger schools, instead of seeing their specialist once a week, they're on a six-day plan. Some of them are six-day with extra kids in, so they're teaching, you know, 30, 35 kids, six days, and every sixth day. In a perfect world, we see our kids 36 times a year. We know that's not perfect. I'm guessing we probably see them 30, but that would back it off another five or six. So, I just wanted to, for you to talk to the point of, are all the specialists way thinner? Do the kids get less of the specials? Or do you have a plan for that?
Thank you, Ms. Moncrief, that's our music teacher, Ms. Moncrief. I don't think, oh, go ahead.
Well, sir, I can tell you that the space in the new school is awesome. We're very excited, and it addresses those resource and breakout areas for the reading, the focus, the ESL programs, all that. We've identified those spaces in the new school. The prototype, the Conway, for.
The prototype, the Conway, for instance, that's the closest prototype to this community. Conway was about 88, almost 89,000 square foot facility. It still had some shortfalls in addressing resource space. The new facility is 107,000 square foot with essentially the same amount of students except for an addition of two pre-K classes planned. So I think, to answer your question, I think there's going to be a lot of adequate space to address not only the resource spaces, music, art, those type of programs, but also the breakouts for those, the psychologists and the counselors and the reading specialists and the math specialists, those things. So I think we've tried, we brought in a vast group of educators to help us develop those ed specs that we briefed in one of the slides, and I think our product is going to be absolutely wonderful for that prototype. So if we were to rebuild here at Ferry Farm and follow that same prototype, the spaces there are going to be absolutely outstanding. Did that answer your question, ma'am?
I think...
Okay. Well, I can try to answer some more later tonight.
Was it a staffing question?
It's a staffing, the staffing, will the music teacher still see the kids a few times a week, or? I'm not sure about...
Basically, the question is, they're worried about staffing, so if you're a specialist, so you have a class of students, you see 36 times a week. So the concern...
A year. Yeah, a year. Now, we have some awesome teachers, so they may see them 36 times.
Thanks. But what they're concerned with, when you bump up to maybe an additional 200 students because the 900 building, it's not going to have 900 students in it when you look at the program capacity also in it. So it'll be between 800 and 900, somewhere around there, but there's still those additional students from the 630. Will there be an additional specialist coming into the building to work with the students?
So what I would hope...
And will they have an area in the new school?
Yeah, what I would hope is that we would adjust our staffing standards for the larger schools and to ensure that we have the same amount of time in all of the specialty rotations in all of our schools in the division, okay? So I don't think the number of times you get to go to music or art or any of those other areas should vary depending upon what school you are in, in the county, and right now it does. But the board would need to adjust their staffing standards in order to support that. They did a good job with elementary class size, right, and improving elementary class size across the division. We just need to set that as a goal and do the same thing there.
We do have staffing standards you can see online. We need more work. We need more work and more money.
And I can say that I worked with, I was a community member and with Mr. Freeman and a couple of teachers when we were doing the designs, and that was something that we brought up is that we were looking at all of, a music teacher and a half, and so when we designed the building, that was in consideration, and there is space for that as well. So that was done when we sat down to a married to do all those things.
Okay. Just one little one. That's okay.
And mine is just, I don't have a question. Mine is a comment. I work at Windin Creek Elementary School. I live here, but I work at Windin Creek. We have several grades with seven classes, and so we bring in PE, art, and music from Rock...
Rock Hill?
Rock Hill.
Rock Hill.
I think it's Rock Hill. And they come in twice a week, and we're able to rotate it. It does stink sometimes because they'll have two music classes going on at the same time, one in the music room, the other in the classroom, but we make it work, and it isn't quite the disaster as everyone had thought it was. So if there is a need for an additional specialist, the staff is prepared by working it out.
Yeah, so, you know, the benefit of building a school that meets our new elementary design specs is that's all taken into consideration.
All right, so let's take a straw poll. Miss Bathke?
An academic question. I don't need that. I have a very loud voice.
An academic question. What does a one cent increase in our tax rate give us in dollars?
Good question. I don't know, $1.6 million, but it could be around $1.6 million. Mr. Cohen, what is a one cent increase?
1.6 million.
Holy smokes, I was right. How did I know that? Supervisors are talking right now about the tax rate. They could go with the 99 cent on the dollar tax rate, or they could go with a proposed 96.5 cent on the tax rate. And so, you know, we on the school board, I'm going to speak for my, I don't like to speak for people, but we on the school board really hope they stick with the 99 cent tax rate.
But those that got a 25% increase in their house, not the 10 that the paper says, are not happy about that. 25% and across the street got zero.
Yep. And so that is what the supervisors, though, hear from Ms. Smoot, right? Is, yeah, half of us say tax increase, but the other half say, hey, my kids are gone. Well, it does, it does. That's exactly what they say. My kids are gone, and don't raise taxes. Thanks, see you later, right? So it's just, who's the 15 to 20 people are going to show up at the board of supervisors and talk it, right? Right, right. Well, you can raise your hand.
But you'll still get more money from me because my house supposedly increased 25% in two years.
I wouldn't, I can't do anything. Scott Mioski.
I know.
Did I say Scott Mioski? I sneezed. Scott Mioski.
You're going to get an increase, but if you keep it the same, then we're going to be increasing it even more. A lot of us don't have that kind of money in our budget because our salaries, where I work here at Ferry Farm, does not increase.
Janet, you're right.
Especially the paraprofessionals.
Janet, you're right. Okay. All right, we're going to move. Let's take a straw, no, let's take a straw poll. We're done with the questions, we're going to move on. If you think a rebuild is the way to go, raise your hand.
New school.
Brand-new school. All right. Okay, I think that's, I got people signed in, so. Okay, and renovation? Renovation? Even if you could write renovation on a card and slip it into the thing if you really don't know. If you don't want to get in trouble on the way out, right? Okay, hey, let's move on. Let's go.
Before we move on, I want to say thank you for your passion.
Yes.
But you do have to go to the board supervisor like that here. We're here, you get here, but make sure you get there.
So March 27 o'clock, or is that...
Where's the next meeting?
Well, our next meeting is March 20th, and that's in the afternoon. We're going to present the school budget. We still haven't seen the actual budget yet. It's supposedly going to be available for us online tomorrow afternoon at some point, so we haven't actually seen that yet. We haven't seen, there you are, we haven't seen this new iteration of the CIP, which is interesting, and we're sort of hopeful to see that soon as well. So on the 20th, we can hear from the school board and hear what their budget is in general. We have the 3 o'clock meeting, we have the 7 o'clock meeting. People can comment either session and tell us what you think on anything. We have, we organized, we could have advertised the tax rates, and we didn't because we hadn't received the school budget yet, and we didn't thought, to be respectful to the school system, we should at least listen to what they said. Some of the staff...
It's not happening because of the time limit and the tax notes, but we felt to be respectful, we should at least look at the school budget before we set the limit. And so on the 20th, we're going to get recommendations about when we need to advertise it, that we can set tax notes out to the general, so that everything goes through the exact way. So we may on the 20th set the tax, advertise the tax rate. What that means is if we advertise it at 99 cents, we can go below there anyway we want. If you look at Spocky, they usually, you'll see in the paper, they usually advertise it a way or another. So it's, you know, but at least if you set it, it's a ceiling, and then you can do whatever after that. So we're waiting to get the information. We've been shot since 6:00 talking the budget. Our side is still like yesterday. So it's just the start of that process. We're looking to prove that. Okay, what's the next report? On growth, by the way, there is not currently the 4,000 things, Mr. Shurford.
I chair the, I chair the commission when we read the CIP. And the goal was to move the growth area so that it's on the outside of the CIP, so it's harder for us to put it in. One of the things that the board is very strong about is preserving the core characters in our end of the county, and so we are looking at various measures to what we can do to keep it green, to keep it, you know, to keep it the way that we in the Ferry Farm area like to see it in the White Oak area. So there is...
There's actually a lot of effort to try to do that right now.
I think Ms. Young, Ms. Healy, and Ms. Chase are going to leave us now, but thank you so much for voting with us at Ferry Farm. Ms. Young, go ahead.
I just wanted to make a comment before we, um, before we jump to that method. If we increased that sales tax at 99 cents, that was a point zero, 0.35 increase, which was going to be $16 a year, which was, I said, it was Twalawas, subs, Starbucks coffee, one movie ticket, including teachers, the paraprofessionals, bus drivers, and monitors, that was going to be a price for school, so.
As long as that money goes there.
I'm hoping, I'm just thinking, sir?
I said, as long as that money goes to that, it's the, you know, it gets off to something else.
All right. And I'm saying to show up and the board of supervisors, make sure that your voices are included there, okay?
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Freeman, let's go. Let's go. Move on. School security. Dr. Benson, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. And Mr. McCosker, did you say the video is going to be safe for 80 years?
80 years this video is going to be safe for.
All right, let me just note that Virginia basketball is still number one in the country. I don't know when the next time we'll be able to say that, so we'll just, we'll put that out there. So first of all, I want you to know, student safety is number one priority for us, okay? We know that we can't have the positive things happen in our classrooms unless our young people feel safe. We know that you, as parents, are not going to be comfortable sending your kids to us unless you know we're taking good care of them, right? So the division really has been working on this for years, and we have things in place that some divisions right now are just starting to put in place as safety, physical safety considerations. So all of our facilities, regardless of age, have a security vestibule, so you don't walk right into the building, you walk into a space and then walk into the office. All of our schools have the Aphone electronic entrance things, right, where you're supposed to step up to the yellow marks on the pavement and buzz, show your ID, or if you have a badge, you know, you can get in electronically. Our schools have panic buttons in the offices that are tied to a call center, which then calls 911. We're in the process of reconfiguring those so that they go to 911 directly. We've got one of our schools, Rodney Thompson, is already doing that, okay? There's also 911 radio in every one of the schools as a backup that has a connection directly to 911. Our schools have over 2,500 cameras distributed throughout the campuses. They are accessible from the sheriff's cars if they are within the range of our Wi-Fi, okay? We're going to go one-up with that. We are putting a fiber line into the emergency control center at the sheriff's office, so they'll be able to access our cameras from there, like, all the time, okay, and do it remotely. But they have to be on our network in order to be able to do that. We have a tremendous partnership with Sheriff Decatur and the sheriff's office. I mean, they really do an exceptional job, and they really pay attention. And when there are things like the tragedy that occurred in Parkland, they are right there the next day with a presence, helping us feel safe coming into our, coming into our schools. Our middle schools and high schools each have an armed sheriff's deputy in them right now, our school resource officers. I can tell you that, you know, the thing that we want to make sure that we're in a position to stop is someone who is armed and coming into our buildings, an active shooter. At the top of my list would be to have an armed sheriff's deputy in every one of our schools, elementary schools included. Right now, we have our DARE officers that rotate through our elementary schools, but they rotate among, you know, 17 elementary schools. And the issue with an active shooter is whatever bad is going to happen, it's going to happen like in the next five to 10 minutes, right? So how long is it going to take for some of our sheriff's officers to get to remote locations across the county? So we're talking about that. The board's talking about that. We're going to be looking at whether or not the board wants to support a resolution, asking for that kind of support from the supervisors. It's pricey, we know it, okay? To add sheriff's deputies to all of our schools, it's about $1.3 million in recurring costs, so that's annual, and then there's about another million dollars in terms of equipping the officers, which includes the sheriff's car. So we're going to continue to look to see what enhancements we could, we can put in place. We're not going to communicate everything that we're doing in terms of enhancing safety because if we put that out there publicly, somebody's going to look at that and say, okay, well, I'm going to figure out how to get around that and get around that and get around that. We have a lot in place now. The sheriff announced this week a task force that's going to be looking at school safety. We have building-level folks sitting in on that as well as division-level folks, so we'll get some, an opportunity to take a look at practices and how we might be able to improve. There are some things that we know we would like to do. The board has added a half a million dollars to the funding request to try to address that. One of the things that we want to do is that once you get into the main office, we want to be able to secure the door that allows you to get into the rest of the building with an electronic lock. So there would be two electronic locks that folks have to go through in order to get into the, get into the facility. There's also the human element thing about what we do, okay? And I will just tell you that we've got to stick to our protocols. We cannot be opening doors and holding them open for the person behind us who's coming in, who has not checked their ID yet, right? We can't be propping doors open with chairs because we've got some access out on the playground or whatever. We just can't, we can't do that. We need to make sure that we're following our own protocols from the safety side of things, and then we'll, you know, we'll put equipment in to help us, help us monitor that. But it's, you know, we have as much of a responsibility here to provide that, do the right thing with security as well. The other thing that's really critical is having great relationships with our kids because most of the things that we uncover and are able to stop, it's because somebody has come to us, typically a student, and said, I think I saw, okay? The issue that happened at Gale recently, we had a young lady say, I think I saw a young man load a handgun, okay? She could not identify the student, so we put the school into lockdown, which is, that's our precaution. Sheriff's deputies came over. We reviewed the video from all of the cameras that we have. We identified the person that had put the, and it was an airsoft gun, put the airsoft gun into their backpack and then took appropriate action, right? But that happened because somebody saw something and said something about it, and we need our young people to understand that is an important part of us protecting them. So I'm thankful that we have those kinds of relationships in our schools. The young lady who stepped up was recently recognized at the sheriff's office for her act of courage in, you know, seeing something and then saying something about it to someone who could do something about it. And I think I probably hit most of that, okay?
Thanks, Dr. Benson. Are there, I have a few safety questions. Is there any coming from the audience first, please? Go ahead with the audience with the microphone.
This is on. Hi, as everybody probably knows, I'm the first lady you see when you come into Ferry Farm. She's the one right behind me. Usually, one of us is the one that buzzes you in when you come to visit. So between you and me, once you come in through that metal door, it's a wooden door.
It's open.
That's open and doesn't lock. If there's an active shooter who comes through that door, I'd love to be able to duck behind my desk and hit the 911 button, but it doesn't work. And I would love for all of it to be caught on camera, but the camera above my head doesn't work.
My 911 button does work, but I'm not always at my desk. I'm oftentimes in the hallways running things back and forth. I'm oftentimes in the hallways running things back and forth. But it's the two people that are responsible for letting you all in, one, we appreciate it if you don't mind that we ask to see your license, because we get cussed at a lot when we ask for it, but we are just doing our job, we're doing what are told, we're following the protocol, trying to keep you and your children safe. We're not doing it to be jerks. We card the lady that's there every day, Leslie Buchanan, the PTA lady, she shows her ID every time she comes in the building. Dr. Benson shows his ID when he comes into the building.
And when I don't have my badge, they make me show my driver's license.
Theirs driver's license, that's right.
I have done that.
She has.
Yes.
So I would just like to address the Ferry Farms, the other thing in the rebuild, we don't have a little bastard door. We have something they come into, but there's an old 67-year, or, no, 60-year-old door in there that has a glass window in it that used to lock, but now does not, and so...
So, so part of what we want to do in this next phase is to make sure that that second door is secure, okay, and that you have a way to control it from your, from your desk.
Yes. But with the, the 911 button and the camera, you know, we can work order to death, this building. We're putting lipstick on a pig. We need to modernize.
Can you get facilities immediately to look at that tomorrow? And I'm not joking. He says these things are broken right now, Ms. Benson?
Work orders have been put in.
Come on, really? That is upsetting.
Why does the 911 button work?
That is upsetting.
I will explain to you first that they have come into the building and they have assessed it, okay? I'm waiting for things to come back, so it's not that I haven't set a work order.
I'm not pointing you, I'm pointing to the facility.
We are going through the process and we have to go.
Let's, let's put an action item as a high priority. How about Gale Mill? That should, that should be a good incentive right there. They're thinking it was an airsoft, they heard. Wow, I'm shocked. I'm shocked you might have heard that. I'm really sorry. Wow.
911 button? We have one per school. I'm not sure what this young lady has explained about the one not working, we'll certainly look into that, but the idea was to have one installed at each school, so...
They tested it.
Okay.
If it worked, if it worked, if we didn't...
Absolutely, and you know what? We'll jump on it tomorrow and make sure. This is the first I heard, but not a problem, not, not a problem. We apologize for it not working, you know, right? So we will certainly look into it tomorrow, but, yeah, so. And, and I, I get the whole, trying to make the secure vestibule here, you know, when we, when we are identifying, obviously, the easy way was to say, okay, when we rebuild the school, we're gonna have this, you know, but what can we do in the meantime? And so establishing what we have today was our, our effort, you know, whether many of you feel it was adequate or not, it is where we are on certain decisions. When you try to, when you have something impending, again, not security, as, as the superintendent said, securities are number one focus, and obviously, after an incident like Parkland, it's heightened, and it should be, you know, we should be focused on it. And so we'll certainly look at if there's anything that we can enhance, but, I'm not gonna lie to you, you know, when we're sitting, looking at investment of building systems, eight years ago, when we first started to talk about the renovation or the rebuild, the question was, should we put a roof on here? I know it's not the same, but should we put a roof on it? And the decision, okay, we're gonna spend $300,000, $400,000 on the roof when we think we're gonna be knocking the building down, or, or, you know, in five years, and we made that decision. And sometimes you have to make those decisions and invest, knowing that you may not get the full life out of that, out of that investment. And so the same thing with the security. I certainly will look in that, see if we can enhance it, but I do think, you know, with the installation of the Aphones, you know, those doors are locked. Granted, when you come up and show your ID card, once you come in, there is access, and we know that's a, that's a, that's a weak point, we know that, so.
Do you want quarterly tests on?
You know what? That's a great thing, and when we did that the last week, we went through and checked all the 911 buttons, we found that four or five in the division weren't operational. And so we, we implemented a PMI, a preventive maintenance inspection, to do it on a frequency quarterly, so that we test these things quarterly, because if you're not testing them, you don't know if they've, because a lot of these things are phone lines. It's not necessarily that the button broke or got knocked off, it's that, especially in South Stafford, some of the old Ma Bell phone lines are really bad. And so, as another, not to digress, but another effort we have is going to voice-over-IP on our fiber network to get away from some of these lines, you know? So, a lot of efforts going on in multiple areas, so.
Okay, good question.
All right.
Thank you.
The question I have is, you were talking about remodeling, redoing schools for, in security reasons. If you've ever been to Grafton Village School, when you go in, right when you go in, their cafeteria's on the left-hand side, and they don't have a wall, they have glass windows. So, there's an average of six classrooms in that lunch period at a time during lunchroom. So if somebody were to get into that building, the first room they're gonna come up to is the lunchroom, and them kids have no way to hide. There are glass windows now, if you've ever been there, and they can see right in there and see all them kids. So them kids cannot secure in place. They're gonna have to run, they're gonna have to go to get away from the individual that got into the school. So my question is, is when you're looking at redoing these schools, are you looking at going away from that, from windows, open windows in the cafeteria, so the kids have a place more, us, instead of a solid wall, so they have a better place to hide and secure themselves? Because right now, if somebody got into Grafton, the windows are there, they're gonna see all them kids, and that's the first place we're gonna go. So my question is, when you make decisions on this school, is the window something you're gonna stay with, or is you're gonna go more into a wall environment, so they have a better way to secure themselves? That's a great, great question, and there's a fine balance that we try to strike, from creating environments to have our kids and our, our kids flourish in an education environment, and making our schools a fortress or a prison, right? So it's a fine balance. We have all of our schools, the lunchrooms are essentially like that, it's, you know, there are a few of the older ones that don't have a lot of windows and don't, but you go walk into Stafford High School, or Colonial Forge, any of the high schools, and the lunchrooms are wide open. Some of the elementary schools are that way also. So, there's a fine balance. We follow a, a, a process, it's called SEPTIV, and I can't tell you the exact acronym, but it's basically, you follow security protocols or security policies as you, in your design. You try to incorporate that in your design. Now, having a lot of glass certainly is a challenge for a lockdown drill, and for those places that we do, we have shades that we try to draw down. Can't speak specifically on Grafton Village, I know exactly what you're talking about. It used to be a full wall, and then it was opened up as part of the renovation. It certainly creates a great environment for those children, and not only lunch period, but when, other things, activities. But it does provide a challenge to us from a security perspective. So we feel that a lot of the other enhancements to try to prevent unauthorized entry into the school helps us gain those seconds, gain those minutes that are valuable in the response for our sheriff and other first law enforcement and first responders. So, to answer your question, we are looking at it, we do look at it, we take it very seriously during the design process for any new schools or any renovations, but we strike a fine balance in creating what 99.99999% of the time in our schools are just a wonderful environment that these students are teaching and the teachers are teaching. So, I hope I answered your question, sir. Yes, sir. I, I won't, I won't say we're gonna go away from the windows, because there's so much value in creating outside air, I mean, outside air, outside light coming in for the learning environment. It's really important, but we do understand the, the shortfalls of that from a security perspective, and we wrestle with that and try to strike a, some fine balance there, so. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. We're gonna move along to next. Dr. Benson, calendar.
Oh, great. All right, so, we're gonna be providing essentially four calendars for the board to consider, not four different ones, but we're gonna do, each calendar's gonna represent a two, two-year span, okay? We're gonna put one together that's a traditional post-Labor Day start, and then we're gonna put another one together that is a pre-Labor Day start. We have gotten, you know, all kinds of feedback from folks all across the county, teachers and, and parents, from the, how the calendar work was handled last year. I, I really don't think we're gonna hear anything different than what we heard the last time around. One of the things that I think we need to be cognizant of is that we're seeing more and more divisions in the region move to earlier start, okay? And at some point, I suspect that's gonna create an additional challenge for us as a school system, okay? We are, we're not talking about next year, we're talking about FY '20 and '21, so it's, it's, it's in the distance, okay? The, the calendar that is going to be the, the, the pre-Labor Day calendar, from my perspective, needs to start early enough so that we can finish the first semester before the winter break, right? It, it makes no sense to me to have to come back after the winter break, have kids take exams, or have some other responsibilities that are continuance responsibilities from the previous semester. You know, the only positive, really positive thing there for me is being able to wrap up the first semester before the winter break and have a real break for everyone, okay? And then come back and start the second semester. It's more of, of, you know, of an, of a challenge, not a challenge, but it's probably been more help at the middle school and high school level, right? Because, you know, they've, they've got their schedule in semesters in, in any case. There have been folks that have asked for any kind of quantitative data that suggests that you get higher levels of achievement by testing before winter break as opposed to after winter break. I have been looking, I don't, I have not found any, and I don't think we're gonna find any. I have looked at all the surrounding divisions that have moved, I looked at their test scores before, when they weren't on a traditional calendar, I looked at their test scores when they moved to the pre-Labor Day start, I just don't see anything that is statistically significant. So, if it makes sense for us to, you know, finish the semester before the winter break and, and have a real break for everybody, then, then that might be what we end up hanging the decision on. Middle school students, high school students in particular, that are participating in any kind of extracurricular activity, athletics, band, or whatever, they're back in August anyway, because they're, they're practicing prior to the start of school. It doesn't have any impact on our competition schedule with VHSL, because those, those are determined regardless of when we start, when we start school. So we're just gonna put them out there, right? A, a two-year sequence of a traditional calendar and a two-year sequence of a pre-Labor Day start, and we'll, we'll see what people have to say about them, and then we'll let the board make the ultimate decision as to, to where we go. But it will not be for next year, be FY '20 and '21.
When will those be put out?
I have drafts ready to go. I have a parent advisory group and a teacher advisory group that are meeting next week. I want to put that in front of them to get some feedback, kind of litmus test them, before I put them out for everybody else to look at. So I expect that we'll be presenting them to, to the board at the first meeting in April.
So the only thing I got was three questions that were kind of the same on why are the parents or the community not on the calendar committee? Or are they on the calendar, calendar committee?
So the, the previous model that the, the board has used is to have a, a representative from each one of the magisterial districts participate on the committee. Most, most school divisions that are in our comparison groups don't do it that way. They put together calendars, they put them out for the community to comment on, there's an opportunity to say whatever folks want to say about them at, at board meetings, and a decision gets made. So I asked the board if, if this time through, we could try that process a little bit different and see if, perhaps it might be a little less controversial, and I'm hopeful that it will be.
Okay, let's get... Question.
Hi, Dr. Benson, a quick question. Hi. You had talked just about the test scores for semester grades with regard to before the break versus after the winter break. I have a, a variant off of that with regard to AP scores and other, and other exams whose dates are set not by, you know, within, within our county. Do those grades change, or do those scores change for the districts that have more time to prepare? I know our students are certainly stressed because they're fitting in the same amount of material in a shorter period of time.
So, school systems that were willing to share their information with me, I just, I didn't see anything that was statistically significant. There were some minor variants, but not, not that you would say, oh my gosh, that, that made such a huge difference in, in performance. We do have some teachers that have collected some of their own data internally, administering their exams in December at the high school level, as opposed to administering them after the winter break, and there's, there was a small improvement, but again, if you, you know, if you look at something as being statistically significant, it didn't appear to be.
So even AP exams themselves?
Yeah.
We had the same percentage of students?
Close, close, yeah.
If I could, I'm, I'm usually an AP reader for government, so I'm usually hanging around with the college board people, and they, they say there's no real statistical difference. The one difference is to be if the community pays for the exam, or the student pays for the exam. If the student or the family pays for the exam, they tend to take it more seriously. If the community pays for it, they tend not to. But the early start or not late start, the, the college board has said they haven't seen anything different, and the different teachers that I interact with don't see any difference.
So what other factors that would relate, say, to student satisfaction? You know, we have really smart kids who are doing a lot of AP exams, or AP and ID, or, you know, all of the different variants, or, you know, children performing at that level. Their satisfaction, because they're taking the same amount of stuff after a shorter period of time, is there any consideration?
A shorter period of time?
Well, sure, they have, if they, if they start post-labor, they have the same amount of material that they have to master prior to the exams, so they have to, in addition to all of their academic stuff, or to curriculum stuff, it's just more shorter period of time than other areas, than other districts, different states that have...
The, the thing that, that I hear most often, and I, I am in schools quite frequently, is the feeling, the additional pressure that comes along with being responsible for continued work during the course of the winter break, and then coming back afterwards and having to be assessed.
All right, next slide. All right, let's get to the budget, because we're running late, but there, this is awesome feedback, and I've, I've got some cards here, and I'm gonna try to hit them up before, but I know everyone's tired. School board approved budget. So what the superintendent does, superintendent goes out to all the schools, goes out to the leadership in the schools, comes back down with, with what he and his staff think is the most, the best budget for the school to get us to where we need to be for the year. It's, it's not constrained by what the supervisors can afford, what we can afford, that, those aren't constraints, it's just the needs of the students, okay? So for July 18, 19 is the budget. Just so you know, it's about $296 million is what we spend on our budget. We're asking for a $17 million increase from last year. Here are the key changes. Teachers' pay scale enhancement is $1.84 million, but that's only for teachers in 0 to 11 year range, okay? Service scale enhancement for paraprofessionals, bus drivers, and monitors, $2.14 million. I fought hard, and the school board agreed, we needed to add more money to the paras. They are not even on the bottom of the market with our comparison divisions. A 2.5% COLA, cost of living adjustment, is $5.2 million for all of our employees. We are asking for 86 new positions, 16 for growth, 53 for compliance, special education compliance for the most part, and 19, five other. Service contracts take up about $2 million, custodial, new math software, what have you, capital purchases, buses, infrastructure, and security upgrades. We added that as a last-minute add for lockdown, fixing our card readers, fixing the buttons that are broken, looking at our cafeteria, these doors don't lock, right? So, that, those kind of things. The revenue side of the house is what money, what money comes in? So, our revenue increase this year is $7.55 million, that's an estimation, because that is include, that is what the board of supervisors have given, I'm sorry, that is what the county supervisor has put forth in the county supervisor budget, okay? So state gives us about $4.2 million, sales tax receipts. Federal gives us, hey, check this out, 50 grand. Whoa. Boy, isn't that a lot? You know, when the, when the federal government calls up and says, "We're gonna take X, Y, and Z away from you," well, what are you gonna take away? The 50 grand? Okay? Remember, $296 million. Miscellaneous, $10,000. Local funding, county administrator proposed. So, the majority of our budget, the vast majority, is state-funded and local-funded. So the local-funded was $3.2 million this year from our, our board of supervisors, and not our board... our Board of Supervisors, our county administrator, but Monday, or, Tom, when will you guys actually make a vote on the budget? Will it be Tuesday?
No, next.
It'll be?
On the 20th, we'll maybe set an advertisement of the tax rate.
Of the tax rate.
We won't be doing the budget budget till April.
April, right, right. So the tax, which will affect the schools, right? Public day school is getting some money, and, but the funding gap is about $10 million. Questions? And Mr. Fulmer's here, he's our CPA. Let me, let me go to a back, where's the flicker? Go to our backup slide. Okay.
Special education?
Yeah, let me have it. Special education's going up, Scott, you know, these are the ones, these are the stuff I just didn't want to, I didn't want to kill you with, especially at nine o'clock at night. So, here's the teacher comparison scale, and this is, you know, this is a source of aggravation for a lot of senior teachers, because when we do the comparison scale, we see, here's Stafford, okay, in these, in these blue, here's the years of service along the bottom, 0, 5, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, and here's our comparison district. So we see that our junior teachers from 0 to 11 years here, I apologize, 0 to 11 years here are underneath our comparison district median of the market, and then at 11, they start going up. So, we're finding ourselves dumping a bunch of money in here because we're trying to keep the younger teachers, who, you know, and the argument is the younger teachers kind of stay here, they work hard, some of them stay, and, but a lot of them do leave. But what are we doing for the senior teachers? So that's, that's an issue. And something that I talked to Dr. Benson with is, you know, when we're looking at this comparison scale, we can't just, we can't just keep dumping money down here and then having them leave, so we need to start doing some human capital planning, okay? We need to start doing retention bonuses. We need to start doing career scale enhancements for the teachers on the upper level to reward them, because the teachers on the upper level are the ones that are training the new ones that end up leaving. We have about 300 people rotate out every year, and the majority of our young teachers that are leaving are on that, on that scale as well. It's probably about a hundred or so leave. And so, that's an issue that we're trying to fix.
I just have a quick question about that. Are they leaving their career entirely, or are they going on to teach in other divisions?
So that's a good, that's a good question. On any occupation that you're talking with, you try to get an exit interview and say, hey, do you just hate school board member Dewayne McOsker? Is that why you're leaving? Or are you going to back to Pennsylvania now that with your three years of tenure, and now that they'll hire you? And so, it's a combination of both. Or is your husband or your wife in the military? Yeah, so those are some of the things. Scott, I mean, Chris, have we found, has HR actually got a hold of, we do, they do post the reasons, however, we, they're not always forthcoming.
The data they have now is kind of inconsistent of how they were doing the exit survey, and they've ramped it up going forward to have firmer results. And right now, they're basing it more on, they had a survey, but it wasn't detailed enough to get good information, and it's also hard to, sometimes you get someone leaving for them to give you honest responses back. So they're making a detailed attempt to try to get better exit survey data. And that will include why they're leaving, where they're heading, and what they pay that they left, if they relocate, as Mr. McOsker mentioned, we can't really compete with somebody that's leaving to move back home. But we can, you know, if somebody's going to Spotsylvania, whether it's pay, or whether it's another reason, we want to know why, so that we can try to maintain them in the future.
Chris, I want you to talk through, we're just going to put up the teacher scale. Ms. Smoot, don't yell at me, it's not the paraprofessional scale, but we're just going to talk about the teacher scale real quickly, and then.
So, our first column here in the yellow is the current FY '18 teacher scale, and this is the level, years of experience that they have. So, what we did here is, we set the median of the market, so we took our nine comparative divisions, took the median for every level, and that was our target. So, this year, we tried to put a little bit more in between than the median and the target, just to try to alleviate a little bit of the compression, because with this model, from the 0 to 11, we've been investing money, started to crunch those numbers together. So we're trying to get a little bit of space in between them. So, the way this works is, you'll see, the FY '19 column here on the left is to show that, starting next year, they'll be, and this column would have two years of experience, right now they only have one. So, as you move across, you'll see that with the market enhancement, a, somebody moving on to their second year, we're making 43, 855, and then we would add an additional 2.5% to that to make it 44, 951. So we set the target median, or the target average median of the market, and then we've added a 2.5 full up on top of that. So, same thing, just now we're looking at the top of the market, but as Mr. McOsker mentioned, on the previous slide, where that red line was where the market enhancement stops, because once you hit that 11 going on to 12, those pay scales are above the median of the market, for the target. But, so you'll see that the target and this first column here, which is the target before the COLA, will be the same, but then we added 2.5% to that target.
Questions for Mr. Fulmer? Or me?
I'm curious why this does not affect the teachers above the 11 years. I want to keep our solid teachers that are going to teach the younger teachers. They need to have good role models, and that's just common.
So, so there's the market enhancement, which is a specific amount of money towards the lower of the market, and then there's the?
So, the approach with the market enhancement is to target the areas that are below the median of the market. So, like you mentioned, we do a market comparison with our comparative divisions, and look at every level on the scale and say which ones are above and which ones are below the median of the market. So, 11 and below are below the median of the market, so they're getting the enhancement to get them up to the median of the market, and then from 0 to 38, we'll get a 2.5% COLA. So everyone is getting the 2.5%, but the market enhancement is targeting the areas where we are out of market.
Okay. And so what are we using as the basis for this? Like, are we comparing ourselves to Spotsia and Prince William? Is that what we're, because those are on either side of us, and I feel like all of those teachers make more than us, or like, I'm not a teacher, but more than our teachers.
So there are nine other school divisions, including Prince William, and Spotsylvania, Falkir, Chesterfield, and Reicho, Hanover, Loudon, I'm missing a few, Chesapeake, Albemarle.
Am I right in saying, though, that those surrounding counties, like the Merrick area, that need to do the same, what force are, I think their teachers better?
We are above Spotsylvania. We are not above Prince William.
I would be making $30,000 more.
I know, wouldn't that be lucky?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's.
30 minutes, right? 30 minutes and you'd make $30,000.
30,000?
Right.
If we didn't, I mean, I'd rather be in Stafford.
You know, it's.
Everyone's looking at difference, that's my point. You're my son's teacher, like, what are we doing to keep you? Because I've got five teacher friends who went to Prince William to teach, because they're making that much money.
So, Prince William and all the northern counties and localities above them receive a COCA adjustment from the state, so they get additional funding for being a Northern Virginia locality, and that equates to, we get roughly somewhere in the $7 to $9 million range per year, additional funds to help with us to compete. And Stafford County has a, they don't have a lobbyist, but they have a, someone that goes down and keeps track, but they have someone working with the lobbyist down there, and one of the key points that they've been campaigning for, for Stafford County, is to have Stafford County participated or part of that COCA adjustment, cost of competing adjustment. So, we just found out recently that that bill got floored, and will not happen this year, but it's starting to gain a lot more momentum than it has in the past. That's because we have a voice, and I'm very grateful for the county kind of lobbying for that on our behalf, along with some other things.
Is there something we can do to help push that initiative?
Yes, talk to, so there's, there's the Board of Supervisors, will directly affect our, you know, the tax rate and some of the things, but the Bob Thomas and our state legislator and senators that, you know, Bryce Reeves and all, you really need to beat them up. You need to say, hey, this is what we need from you, this cost to compete. How much is Prince William getting?
At least $7 or $8 million more.
So it's like, they're getting 15 million, and we're getting seven.
50 grand that we're getting, or is that?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it's, right, it's a lot of more money in Prince William, it really is. And you know, the, I'm sorry, go ahead, Tom.
Well, just several years ago, Bill Howell worked hard to get us cross-competitive because he saw that. And at that point, Chit Chester was senator, and he just wanted to slide it in the budget one year, and Bill and I were like, no, you need to put it in as something that will be there. The problem is that many other communities, once we started getting it, then Spotsia said, we want to get it, and Falkir said, we want to get it. And so that's part of the problem the legislature's looking at, is that they created this monster many years ago, as far as they were giving it to Fairfax Arlington and Alexandria, and then Loudon, and now everybody else is saying, wow, as we grow farther, and we become Northern Virginia, well, East North Stafford, we want it too. And so that's, that's why there's been a holdup in the legislatures, because they're afraid if they start throwing more to different communities, everybody's going to start wanting it, and that's been the thing. And that's sort of why some of the other counties, I think Spotsia now is, where before some of their delegates were saying, no, 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 and saying, well, you know, okay, if that forgets it, we can get it in the year after. So that's why it's starting to move better. But the legislature's the way to go, is the one that's doing, I know Bob's been in favor of that, and, you know, if you know anybody living in Hartwood area, to talk to delegate poll, and anybody who knows Spotsia, to sort of try to get more votes down in Richmond.
So I want you to go online, I want you to go to Stafford County, and pull up the budget, take a look at it, you know. You know, we're going to fight hard for you teachers and employees here, I know, you know I've been fighting hard. When I first came on the board six years ago, I'll tell you that there wasn't a lot of processes in place at the leadership level, right? I'm in charge of two people, Dr. Benson, the superintendent, and the board clerk. Principal Freeman could tell me to walk out of his school anytime, leave, you're not welcome here, right? Two people, that I'm, the superintendent's in charge of the rest, you know, and I made, when I made the decision last, and the board supported me to get, to get a leader in here that's going to start putting staffing standards in place, these things that should happen in any business. We have to start looking at it as a business, and we have to go across the street with a, with a story that's a solid story based on data. Does the stuff make us happy, does it make me happy? No, you know, heck no, I don't want to see our teachers getting, and our paraprofessionals getting so much less money. But those of you who know me know that I've been fighting hard to do what I can, to influence my board, and to influence the supervisors, to help out where they can. And it's a, it's a trust, it's a trust thing. Prior to six years ago, the school didn't have a lot of trust. They'd run across the street, and they'd ask them for some information, the school board kind of threw their hands up. Can't have that, you know, you got to have professionals in the office that kind of know this stuff, and it's, it's hard business, right? It's hard business. So what's going to happen is, we're going to have a $10 million gap. We're going to go brief the boards of supervisors, or all the supervisor members, and this is why we need the money, and then they're going to say, here's the money that you have, and then we're going to go back and do the ugly business of cutting. I'll tell you that, I know I can speak for a few of my board members, and I'm not going to mention by name, but, you know, pay raises are a top priority for us. Pay raises are a top priority for us. Where I want to be in pay raises is, I want to be where you say, you know, I don't, I'm not going to go north and make, or, if I go north to make 30 grand a year, 30 grand more, then go north. I'm trying to make it so that I keep you here and work here in Ferry Farm, or work here in our school district. If you want to go north for $4,000 more and fight I-95 traffic, see you later. But we need to, we need to make that, we need to make it so that you need to stay here, and that you can earn a living here. So anyway, I'd like to thank the school staff, and I'd like to thank you all for coming out to our, this is, I think this is the first one, I've done some with the, with the teachers, but thank you so much for coming out. We're going to have another one, probably seven months down the road at Dixon Smith or Grafton, one of the other schools that have our students in them, and then maybe, and then maybe Stafford High School, right? So, thank you so much for all that you all do. Remember what we said, what can I do, you know? Talk to the Board of Supervisors, get up there on the mic with your thing, and save your speech, and talk to your Bob Thomas, or Bryce Reeves, or your state legislation. And I thank the teachers that came out tonight, and I thank, I thank the paraprofessionals and all the other folks, so.
I have an ATI for all I do.
And, yes, I thanked, I thanked them early, they had cookies that my sons have taken.
That's all I do with chairs.
The Boy Scouts, I thank them. Once again, and the AV team, I'm going to be here, you can always take my card, and anybody else, did I miss somebody? Dr. Benson, thank you so much for coming out and sharing your wisdom. Thank you, good night.